And I'll...
I'll correct that to say that with the exception of Mayor, all council members are present.
Good. Thank you. Okay, under current business. And Mr. Selich, do you have any?
I have none.
None, thank you.
Mr. Ridgeway? Councilmember Tagle? How about you, Councilmember Nichols?
This is consent calendar.
Consent calendar items, do you have the clarifications?
That's the first 25, is it?
Five through 22.
Is it 22?
I mean, I'm sorry, it's the...
It's clarification to...
I have a question to start with. On item number 10. Mr. Kiff, do you have any kind of picture or something of this thing called an NOLITE? I talked to you about it. I'm happy to...
I do, Mr. Nichols. Well, I'll do. I left it in the office. I'll run out as soon as this presentation is gone and give it to you over for closed session, et cetera.
That's all I had on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
No one keep it in your belt hole, Dave.
Does the staff have any clarifications of consent calendar items?
We have one clarification, and that is on item number 19 regarding the installation of carpeting at Central Library, and we're going to recommend some different wording basically to do the same thing. It's the recommended wording is going to be to approve the purchase and installation of new carpet at the Central Library in the amount of $255,113.27 pursuant to a contract with CNA floor coverings to be approved by the City Attorney's Office and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract.
So that's just a wording change.
That's a wording change. Did the council get that wording change that we'll be voting on later on? No questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Kiff, you're making the presentations on offers to dedicate?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Webb and councilmembers. This is a presentation about what are called offers to dedicate public access easements. And I'll go through this PowerPoint presentation with you. And at the end of the presentation are the pictures, aerial photos of the 17 easements that could be under consideration for your council to adopt. And I'll explain also the adoption process as well. So we'll cover what is an offer to dedicate. And the Coastal Commission and the State Coastal Conservancy staff call it an OTD, so I'll slip into that every now and then. Why were they required? How are they accepted? What about liability? I'll cover the Nolan decision, which some of you may have heard about. And what does our LCP, our Local Coastal Program, say about offers to dedicate access? And then I'll go over specifically the ones in Newport Beach. And I note that there are nine that like, that need acceptance if you're going to accept them in January, early January of 2006. So tonight, there's an item on your agenda at the end of the council meeting that would consider, ask you to consider approving all 17. You could also do a fallback and just approve those that come do in 2006. You could, of course, choose not to accept any of them, and we'll talk through that. So what is an OTD? An offer to dedicate access is an offer to dedicate an easement for public access to a coastal resource. The Coastal Commission, interpreting the Coastal Act, required these, still requires them. And they can do that when a homeowner or developer consents to an... When a homeowner or developer comes in for a coastal development permit, and oftentimes they'll exact a promise, an obligation from that developer to set aside an area of public access. And then at a later date, a public agency or a non-government organization, that's the NGO, can accept and then improve the easement for public access. So an OTD is not the easement itself. It's merely an offer to dedicate that easement. So again, they're not easements themselves. They have to be accepted and then improved to become coastal access points. They can be vertical, so away from a road to the beach. They can also be lateral, away along the beach. And again, the Coastal Commission requires them, but actually, it's the State Coastal Conservancy, which is another state agency, that follows up to see that they're accepted. And then generally, they expire 21 years from the date that they're recorded with the county recorder.
Does that mean that 21 years... If a person has his property, modifies his property, offers this thing at that time, 21 years after he offers it, it expires? In other words, if it's not taken up in those 20?
That's correct. It's a window of time, 21 years' time, and if the window closes...
So some of these may have six or seven years into the 21?
Most that you'll see are close to, well into their 20s. Sorry, they're just into 19, 20 years. A couple you'll see have been approved within the last six to seven years.
But Dave, if they're actually accepted and then the improvements are made, is there a 21-year limitation on them?
No, they're indefinite once they're accepted. They're offered for 21 years and then accepted, that's indefinite. So there've been about 23 of them approved by the Coastal Commission in and around Newport Beach, including oceanfront and bayfront. You'll even see one in Buck Gully. And six of the 23 have been accepted, and 17 remain eligible for acceptance. The city, to my knowledge, hasn't accepted any of the six. It's been the State Coastal Conservancy each time. I could be corrected on that, because we had discussions before about that. So, go ahead.
Dave, actually, I think we did accept the six, or you remember the...
Well...
Norma Glover was here at that point in time, and she objected to the 17.
We brought it before you folks, I think, in 2000. And because the timing was so tight, the Coastal Conservancy ended up accepting them instead of us.
Can they transfer them to us and then we...
They could if they wanted to.
And then we improve them?
Right.
Okay.
One question that comes up often is what about liability? Both the accepting agency, in this case us, and the landowner are responsible for liability claims associated with these improved access ways. But the Coastal Commission notes that most immunity provisions, including the beach liability law, generally protect us. Coastal Commission staff knows of only one lawsuit statewide involving a coastal accessway, and that actually wasn't through an easement, where a user sued a nonprofit managing an improved trail, and actually, the plaintiff received nothing, so it wasn't successful. I wanted to note what's called the Nolan decision, just in case this comes up. In the late 1890s, sorry, 1980s, the Supreme Court found that in some cases, the Coastal Commission was not properly requiring the OTDs. And it was the homeowner Nolan in Ventura County sued and said, "Hey, this was a taking of my property." So what the Coastal Commission did since then is they've just revised the way they've required OTDs. There's a little bit tighter nexus between the public benefit and the exaction that they're taking in the OTD. So it didn't stop them from doing it, but they just do it a little bit less now.
Dave, I had a question for you. I've heard of Nolan and the context of Nolan and Dolan, which is dealing with not only the nexus but the proportionality. Is there anything about that yet, in terms of these takings, or maybe Robin?
Well, as the new cases came, were decided after Nolan, and there's been the Dolan case, and then there was also the Early case, which dealt with fees, they, the Coastal Commission and all public agencies have had to look at both of the prongs or all the factors involved in any dedications that they require.
Issues being proportionality and nexus?
Yes.
And nexus.
Correct. Those are the two main.
I'm not going to read this to you, but our LCP that you might, you would consider adopting tonight has four specific terms relating to offers to dedicate. And I interpret it basically as saying that we would, in effect, do the same thing that the Coastal Commission is doing. And indeed, it's, it would be our council's, your council's policy to encourage these to be opened up for public access where that's reasonable. Is there any questions? I'm going to just keep buzzing through just these two slides.
I have a question, and that is on a place like Buck Gully. What does that mean? Does this person supposedly have to provide a path all the way from the edge of his property down to the bottom, or does it end there? Or what, he's a long way from the coast?
He is a long way from the coast, and we'll, I'll show you that picture in a second. Generally, no, Councilmember Nichols, it doesn't mean they have to provide an accessway to that easement. It just says that someday, the pieces of that, those easement puzzles may be connected enough where the city or a non-government organization might step in and allow access, say, from Coast Highway or from the beach up that easement. But the homeowner doesn't have to provide access to the easement. And indeed, the homeowner wouldn't improve the easement either. It would just be set aside for future use.
But he only applies the easement on his property as well, right?
That's right. So you'll see a broken chains of easements.
Yeah, well, I have some question on is that when we look at private and public property in Coastal Commission, it seems to define it quite differently than something on Buck Gully.
Although Buck Gully is fairly unique for our community in that the entirety of the gully is in the coastal zone. So an easement would be an appropriate thing under the Coastal Act for them to exact. But you're right, it's not direct coastal access today. But someday, if all those easement pieces were linked up, you could have a vertical, sorry, yeah, a vertical accessway down to Little Corona Beach through Buck Gully. And I think that was the Coastal Commission's intent in exacting this easement, or this offer to dedicate an easement.
Good stretch.
This is the list of the 17 easements, and I'll roll right now into pictures of them in order. We're now on the bay here. This is the fun zone area. So you can see there are two existing public walkways that are technically considered offers to dedicate public easements. And the city could choose to accept these easements. And indeed, it's staff's recommendation that you would. So these are two of the 17.
And Dave, are there identified improvements for all of these easements? Because it looks like some of them will be definitely improved already.
Some of them are improved already, and we would do nothing. Others would need improvement, and the council could decide to do that at any time.
Those are kind of unique also, because I believe that you could have a prescriptive rights claim for the public over those two, they've been used so long.
Yeah. This is just a different shot of those easements. Keep continuing up the bay. I'm going to go up the bay and then down Coast Highway. This is the, at 701 to 707 Lido Park Drive. This is a four-plex. These are privately owned. And there is a lateral easement there that is not reachable by either side, to my knowledge. So this would be one of the unbroken, sorry, one of the broken links in the chain that potentially you could add easements all along the bayfront and allow people access to this. But today, to my knowledge, there is not access to this strip. But it's one under consideration for acceptance.
Is that over the water? It looks like it's on the...
No, it's actually, it's actually between the Bulkhead and the, it's a 10-foot strip from the Bulkhead Inn.
Is that right to cross street from Blue Water Grill?
Yes. Okay, I'm continuing now. I'm going down Coast Highway past the arches toward, to the south. This is, I'm going to, this is at 2901 Coast Highway. There's a 10-foot lateral easement, again, from Bulkhead Inn, and then a little L there at the top that would allow people a walkway along that.
That's a site that was originally developed as the John Domonos Restaurant.
Yes. Okay, continuing down, these are two vertical accessways at roughly, they're 2505 and 2507 West Coast Highway, although the recording is 2431. So you could see, and actually, if you drive by that site, they're, they have kept that open for public access. And I think there's even signage. It's a, it's a small sign that says "Public Welcome." This is just another shot of that same area.
Isn't there also a lateral easement across the front of that?
This is all they have in the recording. There may have been one that was somehow otherwise accepted that we don't know about.
I know, but we required one in there, and there was a clause in there saying that it would be implemented and used if a way could be figured out to get across the ways. I'm curious about that. If you look into the development thing, you might want to check to make sure that it may have expired, but I'm almost positive there's a lateral one across.
Okay, I'll look. I'm told from the Coastal Commission that we haven't let any expire yet, but that would be one to check.
I would look in the tract map folder for that, or the parcel map folder for that.
Continuing now past Balbo Island, but now we're on Bayside. This is a, this is 1137 Bayside. It's a vertical easement. This is unimproved right now.
And I'll just a minute on...
Yeah, Marine Avenue is the road there, and the Balbo Island Bridge is right there to our, to the left.
I see. I understand. And that's Bayside?
Yes, Bayside.
Making a sweep, and it's the Yacht Club on the left.
That's right.
And does that extend down to the apartments, or is that the end there?
It extends by the apartments, and it's just an accessway to the bay.
What's on there now? Were the accessways landscaping, or...
When I drive by and look, it seems like a cement, cement way that has some landscaping and a fence, so it's not improved at all. But it seems like you wouldn't remove any buildings, obviously, to improve it.
That's the back edge of that parking lot, isn't it?
Uh huh. Part of the parking lot. It goes in between the buildings, too. This is 1353 Bayside, so again, a little bit further down Bayside, towards the south. And this easement is also unimproved. It's the edge of the parking lot. This is just another view of that. Actually, maybe that's, sorry, this is, they start to look closer. This is a third easement and related properties there at 1701 Bayside. Again, it's the edge of the parking lot, and it links the bay up to Bayside Drive.
That's next to the Balbo Yacht Club?
The Balbo Yacht Club is, yeah, in the center there at the bend of Bayside.
So that's right next to the house right there?
Uh huh.
It would be very difficult to do that on the Balbo Yacht Club side, because that's mainly slope.
But it's, the house, it's a step-down house. It's sloped there, too?
Because when you come off of Bayside Drive, you drop down about, oh, 10 feet, plus or minus, and then it's kind of on a slope area at the edge of the parking lot.
Okay, now, we're going to get into Corona del Mar a little bit. This is on Ocean Boulevard, 3415. You can see the icon saying Breakers Drive, so this is, this is where Breakers actually turns, turns a little bit sandy there. And this, this is a lateral, so parallel to the beach, easement, or offer to dedicate. And it's basically mean-high-tide line to the toe of the bluff. So it wouldn't go up the bluff at all. It'd just be the base of the bluff. This is like, called a dry sand easement.
Is that supposed to go up the walkway, too?
No, it's not. It's just the strip of the property owner's property, so 34115. Think of it as a little, again, a little broken chain.
So this is to create some easement across the Breakers Drive?
Well, it's old Break, remember, Breakers doesn't have any, Breakers is a paper, paper drive here.
It's just in dreams or something.
Yes, right. And I would imagine if we walked on the beach right there, I doubt that 3415 knows or cares that there's, that we're 10 feet, or we're at the base of his bluff, his or her bluff, rather than coming out 10 feet further. So that's the way, the nature of these easements are.
All these easements are recorded, so the title company will pick them up, so she knows.
Right, the offers are recorded.
They are recorded, and they're in the title report.
Right.
Okay.
This is the one that Councilmember Nichols mentioned. This is what the Coastal Commission refers to as former Glenn Drive, and Mr. Webb will maybe educate us a little bit about that. But there, this is a 25-foot buffer zone at the base of the property between 344 and 352 Hazel. And it's an easement for a future improvement. Obviously, you can't get to it now without some difficulty, and it's not improved.
Is that Buck Gully, then?
Yes, this is Buck Gully.
Okay. And is that the old people, I mean, the...
That's Crown Cove.
Crown Cove Retirement Community.
Assisted Living.
Yes. Okay. There used to be a paper street down in the bottom of, the middle of Buck Gully called Glenn Drive. And at the recommendation of the City Attorney's Office, the previous city attorney, we knew that you could never build a road down through there. And so the city ended up vacating that property to the adjoining property owners. However, there was an easement reserved for drainage purposes, if I remember correctly, down the bottom of it. So it's kind of interesting that we would vacate it and then have it dedicated back to us.
Yeah, right.
And that's my question. It doesn't look like the buffer is on the property line.
That's my, that's my graphic problem. Actually, the buffer is the base of the property line. I should have made the line wider.
And is, if we follow this property line around, does that run into the path that's sort of at the bottom of those properties?
That path is really overgrown. It...
Well, at that point, it is, but I mean, further back, it's pretty navigable. I mean, it's actually paved.
As I understand it, those folks' property lines end up at the bottom, the lowest elevation point of the stream. So it would be, if the trail's along the base of the stream, this would go over the trail.
I want to hear that again, because that seems different than what I understand from the drawings. You're saying that those properties go, the stream bed actually is way down to the right, another block, virtually, because this was a road, kind of like there. And there was virtually another road at the bottom of the Buck Gully or equivalent.
Excuse me, Councilmember Nichols, I think that the area that you're referring to is above Fifth Avenue. But this is between Coast Highway and the ocean. And there was a paper street, not ever a road, a paper street, that was shown on there in the original tract map for the Corona del Mar tract. And it was probably, most of the street was on the Hazel Drive side. There really isn't, and hasn't been for many, many years, any kind of trail that has gone up there. I've walked up there several times myself, because a couple people have complained about things in the bottom. And it is very, very difficult, and was six or seven years ago difficult, to get up through the middle of that area, all the way to Coast Highway. So I'm not aware of a trail really ever being, not ever's a long time, in the last 10 to 15 years, ever being in that area.
I don't know that there was a built trail at the end of that property line, but I'm saying those properties that are shown below that trail are not contiguous with the upper ones. And they go relative to the center of Buck Gully to meet those coming up on Shorecliff's side.
The location is really irrelevant to our discussion tonight, if we could move this along.
Well, my point is, is that this is not only dry land, that it's never seen water to this level. And the land below is the one that goes down to the creek bottom.
No, that's not correct, Dick. I would disagree with you there. You need to really see the full map, because that goes over into the, those lots that you see go over into the Shorecliffs area. And I think what you're looking at right now, if I remember correctly, is down where the sign is, is a, I've, there's, the doctor that I go to has that particular property, and he goes all the way to the bottom.
Yes, they go down to the base of the gullies.
So your comment is, is all these we see below the property line are actually the Shorecliffs lots going up the other side?
That's correct.
That's right.
They are.
Oh, I did not understand that. I understood there was a road in there, and then lots below the road. I mean, or this Glenn Drive, or whatever it is, and that did not go down the bottom.
At one time, closer to the ocean, there was, I think, one or two lots down at the bottom. But not in this particular area. So maybe I think we can go on to the next item.
So now we're getting into Cameo Shores. This is 107 Milford. And this, again, is a dry sand easement. So it's the, above the mean-high-tide line to the toe of the bluff.
Can you have your pointer?
I always, geez.
Okay, Leslie.
Someday, I'll remember the pointer. Don't put it in your eye.
This is Morning Canyon, right here, isn't it?
That's right.
And then this, this is the walkway that the community association maintains, and...
And, oh, it goes up above 115 there.
This, right, this goes into Shorecliffs, this goes to Cameo. This is the city's accessway to our sewer pump station at this location. And the Cameo Shores group have built a trail right along this side.
And where is this easement? Are we talking, it is in the yellow line?
Think again, a dry sand easement that's roughly between the mean-high-tide line to the green of the bluff.
So that's a, that's a very wide easement, not a...
It can be as wide as the tide, the mean-high-tide line to the bluff. And remember, it's lateral. It's along the beach.
So this is all the land to the ocean, is what you're saying?
Well, the public has the right anyway to the, from the water...
That's what I understood.
From the water to the mean-high-tide line. This is an easement from the mean-high-tide line to the toe of the slope, which is, the Coastal Commission is saying the public should have the right to that, too, which is why they exacted it as an offer.
But you don't have anything that shows that stripe of land, or whatever.
No, because I don't, we don't have mean-high tides on our maps. I will show you in a couple of slides something similar, where areas that have already been accepted. I'm going to continue down. These are the last three, and they're all together. 4639 through 4651 Brighton. And again, it's a dry sand easement, once more, from the toe of the bluff to the mean-high-tide line. So just like, and that's obviously quite a small one there at 4651. I'm going to show you, this is kind of what, what Councilmember Nichols was asking. This is what the Coastal Commission has on their records for 3611 Ocean. And this has been accepted by the State Coastal Conservancy. And you can see in the red hatched area roughly what they believe that easement to be. So it's the seawall down to the water. And similarly, they did one for 111 Shorecliff in Cameo Shores there. Actually, you know what? That looks like a different one. No? Mr. Selich, do you remember? Does this look?
That's the center walkway.
Okay. Oh, right. So we're going back up the way a little bit. So again, the kind of a small, little pie-shaped sliver there in the red hatch part. So what's next? Tonight, you do have a resolution considering accepting all 17. Then the Coastal Conservancy and the city would work together to get these recorded. And at a future date, you could consider improvements to make some of these easements effective public access. I would note that if you decline to accept these, the Coastal Conservancy's tendency has been to accept them for us. And then they would hold them instead of the city. And that's a policy decision for you, although I think the LCP generally says that you would accept them rather than the Coastal Conservancy.
What are the downsides to us accepting them?
The downsides would be that we would be expected at a future date to improve them. There's no timeline. There's no description of what those improvements would be, so there'd be a cost. To me, the upside is that you have control over those improvements. And you have control over when they're improved and how they're improved.
Some of them, you wouldn't do improvements on, like those that are just sandy beach. You're not, you're not doing improvements here.
Exactly. Yeah, the vertical ones you'd probably never touch.
Well, the verti, no, you mean lateral ones.
Sorry, I'm sorry, the lateral ones.
Lateral ones, but...
The vertical ones are the ones that would need improvement.
Like, for instance, the ones in Cameo Shores, if you go back, like, back, the one in the middle. The next, go the other direction.
Whoa, no, 107. Okay.
Next one. Next one back.
That one?
Keep going.
This one?
That one.
Okay.
Would we, if, let's say, the erosion and the beach eroded down to where the...
Would we, if, let's say, the erosion and the beach eroded down to where the seawall was no longer effective, I mean, we were endangering the seawall because we had eroded away, would we assume any liability related to the repair of that seawall?
My understanding that, no, we would not, because the seawall's not part of the easement. The only, that's generally on that person's property, and that would be a natural occurrence of the breaking waves that causes that. We have no responsibility, we have no liability associated with improvements to an easement that was never improved, or saving it. That'd be your interpretation, too, Robin, off the top of your head?
Does the property owner have a right to put rock on that if that starts to get washed away or not?
They would need a coastal development permit to do that.
It's always hard to do.
So they would, they would have the right if they got that permit.
What if the city were not to accept those, and let's say Coastal Conservancy would, what's the authority of Coastal Conservancy to make improvements?
No, that's a, that's a better question, maybe, for Robin or Sharon, because they would have to come to us, I imagine, for a permit to do those improvements, especially if we had our own LCP. So you'd still have some say in what those improvements would look like, because they'd be permitted through you. We wouldn't own the easement, obviously, so we don't have as much control.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else that we need to have? Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing no one in the audience but our utilities, acting, or utilities director, what is the, are there any questions from the city council members on this item?
I have one. The, these easements are not, well, my question is, is this is not described as public land. This is beyond the public land, most of these easements. My question is, is, well, one, we haven't completed our LCP, or are we working under our old LCP to accept this? And secondly, I just, I don't, I don't understand under what authority we have a right to even ask for them.
Well, can I answer?
Robin may want to.
Item 29, we're accepting the Coastal Commission's approval of our land use plan to the LCP. So we have a.
Can you have it done?
Well, that's just the implementation plan, and we're working on that right now.
But, so we haven't accepted it, so we don't have authority to act under that.
Your council has always had the authority under the Coastal Act to accept these, because the Coastal Act says any juris, any local government jurisdiction can accept these. So within their, since they're within our corporate boundaries, the Coastal Act allows us to accept them. Coastal Act also allows a nonprofit, a non-government organization to accept them, too. So I imagine a 501(c)(3) could come in and step in and accept them if they wanted to also.
But I think that our local coastal plan is working to do everything it can to provide the accesses that the Coastal Commission is requiring, and so I think that.
Right.
It would appear to me that it would be to the benefit of our citizens and us to go ahead and accept something like this, and, as a part of the beginning of the implementation of our local coastal plan.
If it's any consolation, the council in 2000 was ready to accept them all but for an objection by one councilperson, and so we didn't. But now we're here again.
And I would, I would just note that on this slide here, and you can, it's in your packet as well, note that the fourth one down, the 2431 West Coast Highway, and then the three on Bayside Drive, all expire next month. So tonight's your last meeting in December. It would be, it would behoove you, if you wanted to accept them, to make sure you take this action tonight, at least on those. And that's indeed, the Coastal Commission and Conservancy are both recommending that for ease of process, we accept them all tonight. And then we'd go ahead and record them, because that's the final step.
Yeah, and let me make a, just to, Dave, it's not clear, it's not mentioned in the report. The city, through the years, has also had easements recorded against waterfront properties that currently exist. They're, they're all around the bay, quite candidly. And rather than an offer to dedicate, we have easements that exist across the front of properties. And I would, I'm, you know, it would be too hard to guess, but it, I'm sure it's much more than the 17 OTDs that we have here tonight, you know?
Dave, were there any noticing of these property owners about this action tonight?
There's no requirement to notice, but we sent everybody two letters, actually. We did it in the middle of last week. And I did hear from one, I've heard from about four people, and three of the four were very satisfied with the response that these be accepted, and they had just thought it was accepting something other than what they've dedicated. There was one gentleman at the 701 Lido Park Drive location who didn't understand that that was under an easement. He may be here tonight. He was not satisfied that this was, with this, the fact that the easement was there, or the offer was there.
He picked a bad night to be here.
This, this offer of dedication was in their original permit to build.
It's recorded.
And it has not been a current offer of dedication by anybody. Is that right?
That's right.
This was a letter sent by us, which is, is sort of a demand to take the offer that was made under duress at an earlier time to get.
Well, that assumes facts not in the record.
That is not at all true.
Well, that assumes facts not in the record. You made an assumption.
Our, our letter was notifying them that your council may be considering accepting these tonight.
Stricken from the record.
And to let them. Or requiring these dedications is the same way of saying it, right?
Well, no, they're already required and recorded on their property. The offer is a recorded document associated with their property unless, until, unless, less than until it expires.
Okay. Is that, I think we've discussed this item. The next item is closed session? Is that correct? And we're going to be discussing personnel matters? Personnel matters.
I know we have no one from the public, but just for the record, public comments are invited on non-agenda items.
Oh, okay. Public and I, public comments are invited on non-agenda items. I see no public. Patty, do you want to be public? Okay. And that's taken care of.
Okay, sorry.
We're adjourned to closed session.